All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Rhinebeck Planning Board. We have a quorum. Happy to see you all. Let's start with the confirmation or modification of the posted meeting agenda. I know of no changes. Jim, do you?
The only changes I know of are just related to specifics of the Grassmere House application, but none in terms of what we're reviewing tonight.
In terms of the agenda itself. Okay. I assume you've all received Jim's meeting notes and had a chance to look at them. Have you any issues with them or any changes or corrections? Any questions? All right, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the meeting notes as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Michael second.
Second Sean.
Second Sean, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. You've all had a chance to review, I hope, the February seven minutes. Thanks Gretchen for keeping us so updated. And, you know, I can remember days in the past when we were meeting minutes behind and it's nice to have them in front of us so promptly. So have you all had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I see heads nodding. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
So.
Motion by Craig, second by Michael. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Correspondence and announcements? I do not have any myself. Anyone else have any correspondence or announcements? I believe I saw something come in from the C A B and maybe this is also an opportunity to get it out about training for amphibian crossing. Is that, what am I getting that right or wrong?
I think you're getting it right. It's about sort of the big night, as it were, where it's warm enough and wet enough for the amphibians to go to their areas where they lay their eggs. And people are out on the roads trying to help them get across without getting smushed.
And I believe Gretchen, there was something sent out regarding that. Is that correct?
Don't recall.
Okay, I thought you sent it, but that's all right. Anyway.
Melody, it may have come from the Morton Memorial Library in Rhine Cliff.
Yeah, what I saw was that the Morton Memorial Library was going to promote it. So that's good, but if anyone else looking in from the public is interested, I'm sure you can check out the library and that will be available. And the other thing I would put out for the C A B is that they are looking for new members. So if you have any interest in serving on the C A B, I would say go to the town website and look for contact information there or be in touch with Jim Levy, who is our planning consultant. So I'll just get an announcement out for that. If there's nothing else, I think we can move to new applications. The first up is Gigi Madore, 3460 Route 9G site plan, special use permit and wetlands permit for a pool installation. And who is here? I think I saw Gigi's name.
Steven with New James Pools.
Okay, Steven. All right, why don't you tell us, refresh our memory about what you're looking to do?
Okay, so we're looking to put in a in-ground night swimming pool, lap pool for exercise. Gigi had just had a new gym addition put in, so this would be, you know, pretty much tie into that, but also be for leisure and add a little extra aesthetic spark to the property. We've modified our design from the first round a little bit. You can see in the plans that we show what we originally proposed at our first meeting with just the board members. And we pulled it back away from the pond a little bit to kind of find a balance, you know, within the buffer off of the pond. We, just to get ahead of it, Gigi, my client, she is looking to, like, as we've proposed it right now, the pool is not in the most optimal place for Gigi. So that's why we're showing the pool as proposed now and what was proposed and what we're going to be seeing within the meeting, if there's leeway on, you know, how much allowance there may be to encroach into that buffer, knowing that there's going to be minimal disturbance. Why do I say there's minimal disturbance? Yes, there will be some construction disturbance in the buffer area dirt if the pool is accepted, if we get permit for it, but you know, the plan for the pool is to have, is to maintain the existing topography within that buffer and you know, as it works its way back towards the house outside of the buffer to kind of keep what's existing the same, you know, not to interrupt, not to change slope pitches, percentages, angles, those types of things. So the runoff would essentially stay the same and be, you know, as non-invasive as possible once the project is complete. And, you know, that same thought process is within what you see as proposed here, you know, all the way to what was originally proposed. The intent was always to kind of keep the entire structure. You know, the structure is going to be out of the ground in those areas to accommodate the terrain because there is a slope going towards the pond, but we have no there's not one part of us that wants to put any additional hardscape or things like that besides the fence within the buffer. Other than that.
So what we're looking at is exactly as you proposed to do this project.
Correct. That's absolutely correct. And but we will, we are looking to have the conversation with the board members if there is latitude for us to bring the pool further from the house. And to get into that statement, and the reason why is mostly because, you know, you can look on the plan right here with the pool being so close to the the house and the new gym that was just added on. It's there's really no room in there to break away from patio to have more vegetation. That would be easily maintained. So right now, basically, you would walk out of the now existing gym to the pool area and it would essentially, it's just all hardscape. It's all terrace and she's looking to have a little bit of a softer feel, but with the pool that close to the house, it doesn't make sense to, there's really no balance for the both of them to coexist from a maintenance standpoint. If you still have grass up there, it's going to be too difficult to get to by the time you manage the other areas around the project. So being, if we are allowed or afforded the ability to push the pool, say another 10 feet from where we currently have it proposed towards the pond, knowing that we're not going to alter any topography within the buffer and we're not going to have any additional structures within the buffer other than the pool, that would allow her to kind of, you know, allow for grass area and gardens between the gym and what would then start as the terrace for the pool and kind of scale back on all that paving.
All right, let me ask, let me ask Jim to comment and then we can discuss that. It's a little a little out of the ordinary to be looking at an application, knowing that you want to change it. So let's start with Jim.
Okay, thanks, Melody. Just a couple of questions, Stephen, if I can. First one, you're talking about total disturbance on the site and it looked like in the plans, you're talking about over 17,000 square feet of disturbance area. I was just curious, you know, I know why you need to have the disturbance around the pool. I get all that. I wasn't really clear why there was so much disturbance around the proposed four by eight pad for the mechanicals. So I didn't know if you could just explain that. To that area from the tree, you know, that proposed tree down through the mechanicals.
Right, right. So we, it's transparency, basically. So there's obviously, there's a fence being installed in there. There is trenching that's going to happen. You know, there's the pool lights, all the hydraulics for the pool and, you know, it's you're going to dig a trench three feet wide and you're going to stage things one way or the other. And there's that machine has to get by the trench while you're waiting for backfill. So we want to be as liberal with that as possible and, you know, not pull a shirt over anybody's head.
That makes sense. Just wanted to clarify that. It just doesn't seem apparent just looking at the plans, but that sounds right.
Right. And the 17,000 square feet, you know, that's inclusive of the existing access road that was built for building the gym addition. And, you know, it's basically everything that we're touching on the property period, you know, as it should be. But, you know, that's why there's so much. The access road is a pretty long access road. There's a stockpile area that we created that's well without the buffer downhill from the buffer. So, you know, any erosion issues with our stockpiling is, you know, it's going to be managed mitigated and none of it goes towards the pond or the wetlands. So we kind of opened things up a little bit and we're anticipating a little bit more disturbance than we normally would, just to kind of keep the property safe and and whole.
Okay. Was also hoping to confirm whether the mechanicals are going to be enclosed with an offense or roof structure, or if they're just essentially proposed to be left open on the pad that you show behind the, I guess it's the garage there.
Right, yep. Left open on the pad, no structure around it, probably just some bushes to hide it. You know, took a little bit of vegetation, muffle the sound, hide it.
Yeah, so typically we like to see the landscaping plan on here if there is proposed landscaping. You know, we can talk about that further. Light, lighting, you did say lighting, I'm assuming you meant lighting in the pool itself. If there is any lighting to be added on the plans, you know, outside, whether it's on the side of the house or some other lighting, that does need to be shown on the plans and we need to see what that lighting is proposed to be.
Right, we currently have no intent for that, but the lights I was referring to was inside the pool.
Inside the pool.
Okay, right. So that's the conduits coming from the pool with the hydraulics go back to the pad. You know, enlarging the area disturbance from point A to point B.
Okay. And then the last one I had is just asking what the plans are for the material that gets removed to put the pool in. Where are you planning on putting that and how's that going to work?
For regrading, you mean?
Well, yeah, what are the plans for the dirt you remove to put the pool in?
Right, right. So where the pool is located right now, and I assume that you haven't been to the site yet, you'd have no reason to at this point, but how, when you're looking at the pool, as shown in the plan, you know, the topography existing is sloping down towards the pond and also down towards the barn and the leach field. So you'll see that we have a proposed wall in there as well, coming off of a wall, existing wall that's on the gym addition. But so essentially that that whole slope down there, we're going to be looking to make it less steep. We're going to ease it downhill towards the barn. Right now, it's probably about a three on one slope. Going down towards the barn and we're looking to ease that up a little bit. So we have room to place the material, but also because our intent is to have the pool up out of the ground approximately four feet at the highest point between top of coping and existing topography. Our, our actual material that we're going to be pulling out per cubic yard is going to be much less than if the backyard was to be flat. So right now, I'd say from pulling out of the pool, we're probably projected about 130 yards or so to come out of excavation for the pool.
Jim?
Nope, those are my, my main questions, yeah.
All right, let me open it up to questions from other members of the planning board or comments.
I have, I have one melody is that in our wetland law, the way what's required is that when you're dealing with a project, it is going to impact a buffer, get into the buffer. The planning board is required, if the project can be moved further from the buffer, the planning board is required to approve that position. And it seems to me that's what you've done here. You've moved it as far out from the buffer as you feel you can. And given the language, it's a shall in our wetland law, I believe this is where it has to stay.
Okay. Other members of the planning board, comments? I guess that leads me to a little bit of a discussion about what you suggested earlier, Stephen, which is, and I think Michael has just addressed this to some extent, the ability to make other recommendations based on site visits by planning board members. And I think we, that is not what we expect from our folks in the field when they go out to do a site visit, they certainly can come back and report to us. But when they go out in the field, they're going to be going out to evaluate exactly what you have on this plan. And so if subsequent to their review and appearance before us, you or anyone else wishes to make changes to it, we will have to see those revised changes on an application. So I just want you and your, your client to understand that it isn't just so easy to say, we'll talk about it and we'll move it around. So there's going to be some additional steps. And I think Michael's certainly made it clear that the spirit, certainly the law in this case is that every effort be made to move it as far away from the wetland buffer as possible. So I think we just want the record to reflect that.
Right, absolutely. And I agree with you 100%. Like, you can't, we're giving you a plan to make a judgment based on the plan, but also within the plan, that's, that's why we're we're pretty much, we're showing the previously proposed location that we came to the board with back in the, over the summer, which was essentially a little bit frowned upon and understandably so. We looked at other options, we exhausted it. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's trying to find a balance between town code laws, you know, there's variances for that reason. But if my client can't afford to put the pool in this location, or, you know, if there's better means to ways to design it to not have as much patio, right now, we're forced to put a lot of patio in. I'm sure that, you know, overall for the property, the property would benefit more from having less hardscape and more grassing. So.
Let me just say your project in your eyes and in your clients' eyes may benefit from it. That doesn't necessarily benefits the project or the wetland buffer. So that I think is yet to be worked out. So.
I was speaking hypothetically. So I was giving you a reason for the.
I understand, but I'm just trying to make very clear exactly what we're sending our people out to look at as a site visit.
So I just want to jump in, this is changing the door. So just, this is not a sort of, you know, pandemic kind of plan. We have been trying to put in a pool. I exercise regularly. I live on 9G. The last two years has made it virtually impossible for me to leave my driveway and exercise any longer because I'm going to be killed on 9G at some point, either on my bike or by running. So this is to try to enjoy the space that we have here. And, and the, the original plan was from 2019. We've met with multiple obstacles along the way. You know, not the least of which, a previous pool builder who, you know, had a breakdown and his wife left with the deposit and their children and left, left the state. So it's been very challenging. We've looked at multiple options. This is, and so I, and it's a complicated site, even though there's a fair amount of space that's complicated by the wetland, but also by, you know, we've got water going to a garden, we've got a septic system in there, we've got electrical. And then there's the aesthetics of it and then the cost of doing this. We've already spent an enormous amount and had someone, you know, a professional pool designer look at all of these features and come up with what we thought was the optimal plan. That's what we presented in the pre-meeting and then that was quickly, you know, it was easy to say, well, it's not within the buffer, okay to do over. So we, you know, again, tried, it was not the first plan we had, it was at least the third plan and turned the pool 90 degrees, looked at multiple other options, none of which really satisfied, none of which were less environmentally sound. In fact, turning the pool was within the buffer, but it also interrupted the path to the septic and was going to be environmentally far more far more challenging than this plan. When Aspen came out, when Carol Map came out, she was pretty clear that either of the original proposed location and this, the one you see here really were not at all different from an environmental perspective, that none had any more environmental impact on the wetlands than the other and that additional, you know, 20 or so feet in was, did bring it further away from the wetland, but didn't have any less impact on the environment. And so for all the reasons that Stephen has said, that we want, I want a place to exercise, want it to look nice and to fit in within the kind of natural surroundings, not have, you know, a big concrete area or a big stone area, it should kind of fit in. There's a nice English garden there and our plan is to, you know, repurpose as much of that as we can and to try to be consistent with what we have there now and and to be respectful of the property and the view to the pond, not to interrupt that with a lot of hardscape.
Well, thank you very much for giving us all that background information. Is there anyone else on the planning board that has other questions? Okay, I think Jim, that brings us to the draft procedural resolution. Which you have before you.
It's up on the screen. So it's a draft procedure, procedure resolution for site plan, special use permit and wetlands. For the pool, we classify it as a type two under seeker. Schedule a public hearing for what is our date now? Is it March?
March 21st.
So schedule a public hearing for March 21st, 6:15. Send it to the C A B. We will send it to Duchess County Planning and delegate planning board members for a site visit.
All right, who would like to make this site visit?
I'd be open to going.
Sean, Michael, can you go?
I could go.
Okay, good. All right. I think that's pretty much it, is it not?
That takes care of it.
All right, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So move to Lee's.
Thank you, Delise. Nice to see you. Second? Second Sean, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Stephen and Gigi. Michael, either Michael or Sean will be in touch with you to schedule a site visit.
Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. You too. Next up, Robert and Mary. I'm sorry, is it Capes? I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly. I hope so.
It's.
Caps. Thank you very much for correcting me. It's 231 Rhine Cliff Road, site plan review for the construction of a front porch.
Correct. I'm going to start my video. Um, yes, so we are proposing to add a 18 by 13 covered porch to the front of the existing one-story house. A basic porch construction. Shingles to match the existing roof. I believe we are in the required setbacks of the road. And that's our application.
Okay, all right. Jim?
Yeah, so I took a look. Really, we're looking at this because it's on a scenic road. So we're taking a look at this as it kind of relates to that. And I did know when we had the discussion in the pre-con meeting, this is somewhat unique front porch, but there actually is one just like it, just down the road. I think it's maybe two houses down on the other side of the street. So it's not the only one that would be here. So it's not unique and that is the only one. Other than that, I didn't really see any planning issues. They meet the setback requirements. No other issues that I found.
Questions, comments from other members of the planning board?
The only question I have is, I'm assuming they'll have some kind of light on the front of the house and I'm not seeing that in the plan. But that's the only comment I have.
But there's been back and forth about an exterior sconce to the, when you're looking at the house to the right of the front door and possibly maybe one or two recessed lights within the roof of the proposed porch.
No light on the front.
No, yeah, no landscape lighting, no uplighting in front of the house.
I do think, and I could be wrong, but I think when you have exterior doors for safety reasons, there needs to be, you know, where stairs and exterior doors are light. So you might want to check on that. And, you know, Sean's right, if you are going to have one by your front door, it should be shown on the plan. There's time to do that. You know, we want to see a catalog part of what that's going to look like. I don't think it's a big deal, but, you know, I think it's important to take a look at that.
Okay, is that something you would want to have before the next meeting, like a proposed light and location?
Yeah, if we're going to, if everything goes smoothly and you get your site visit and there's no issues in the field, we'd be prepared at the next meeting to move forward and ask for an approval of your application. So if you can, I think I'm correct on this, Jim, right? I mean, I don't know whether it's building code or what, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right. I don't know the building code off the top of my head, but certainly if you're going to put a light in, we'd like to see it. If it's going to be, you know, sconces up in the roof line of your, you knew the new addition there. Just let us know that that's what it is. And that's obviously going to be down lighting and shielded lighting. So there's no issue there. It's if you're going to put something on the side of the house, we'd like to see a cut of that. But yeah, either way, just let us know what your plans are.
I don't see any reason why it's going to hold up the process of the application, but probably it's something you want to cover. And maybe when we schedule the site visit, you can share that information with the people who come to your property.
Will do.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Sean. Anybody else with a question or a comment? Okay, hearing none. I think we're at the point where we can look at the draft procedural resolution.
Sure. So another procedure resolution to accept the application as a type two under seeker. Again, we'll schedule it for March 21st. At 6:15 PM. We will be sending this one to the C A B slash W A C because it is within the waterfront revitalization area. We'll go to county planning and we designate planning board members for a site visit.
Who would like to travel to meet this lovely couple?
I will, Craig.
Craig and I'll go. Up, Delise, beat me to the punch. Okay. Craig and Delise will be in touch with you to schedule a site visit.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right, next up in new applications, T Court Phase 2A, 189 and 195 River Road. Site plan, special use pertinent, wetlands permit, landscape improvements. I'm assuming Howard and Mark are both here.
Yes, we are.
Pardon me?
I'll be doing most of the talking.
Okay, and because we've got other things, and I always remind new applications with big projects that we appreciate crispness and succinctness.
Understood. This one is actually fairly small. You may recall from our last hearing, last month on the phase two B of our application, which was the the miniature train. Our application is broken into four different pieces. And so this is part number two, and it is mostly just landscape components, also planting enrollments and a few on hardscape pieces. Just going through each one and then they're independently.
Howard, can I interrupt you for a second? You, you sound very much in a vacuum to me. I don't know if I'm the only one hearing, having some hearing difficulties, but I see others going, yes, like.
Is this better?
It is a little better. Thank you.
Okay, but I can't hear you.
You probably like that.
Okay. All right.
Echo, Howard. It's almost like a, an echo.
It's like you're in a chamber of some kind.
I think I know what that problem might be.
Yeah, I noticed it the last time you were on, so I thought I'd bring it up this time as well. No, now you're gone entirely.
I muted.
Okay.
That's good.
And now how about this?
This is much better. Thank you.
Okay, it's when you have both microphones turned on, so I have to work with that. Sorry to use up so much of your time on the technical stuff.
We'll take it off the end.
Okay, so as I said, this is a, just landscape components and they're in five different areas on the property, mostly on the Astor Courts property of the three that we own. They're kind of distinct from each other, so I'll go one by one. The first one, as you can see in the upper left of here, the upper left box, you can see the property line between T House and the Astor Courts runs through that area. This was the, originally the mansion house for the Astors was on the key house property. And of course, the Astor Courts have the casino, the clubhouse with the driveway that connected the two of them. But when the properties were subdivision, subdivided after Vincent Astor's death, that driveway was cut off. So our application here is to restore that driveway and to do. So our application here is to restore that driveway and to do a little landscape work around that. Now the next one. Uh, what you're looking at here is a nineteen oh six survey of Jake, of John Jacob Astor's property. Uh, and it shows that original driveway with T House on right, in this case, and Aster Courts on on the left. Um, so we wish to just restore that short section where the text is on there. That currently, if if any of you come for a site visit, that road was partially rebuilt when we did the tree remediation in that area. We use that as a construction road. Assuming that the, you know, using, you know, previously existing driveway was that was the acceptable practice. So this application is going to be paid back. That section along with the the restoration of the driveways that we do in coming year or so. Um, then just north of that, you see an area called West Meadow Restoration Area, or excuse me, that's west. That area in this nineteen oh six map is clear. So both in Meadow area, and you can see the the low clearly lines that show the woodland edge, but the the top and bottom of that particular area. And we would like to restore that. It's currently overgrown with significant numbers of trees. We have the next slide. Um, the left picture shows in nineteen fifty three, the view from the the mansion house to the south, and you can see the Hudson River and the mountains beyond through that log out between the trees. On the right-hand side, you can see the trees that have grown and have covered that view. So that it's that's that small area that we want to remove the trees and reopen that view. Next slides. Um, so that's, this is the area showing that, you know, showing the other side of this application. What Jim is circling right now. It's it's about a quarter acre of land and kind of a whole geography. We will be, after the trees are removed, we will be seeding that for a a meadow grass that probably will be mown three or four times a year, maintained, but not not really long. Then that's that section. Next slide. Um, another area we want to restore is rep, we found remnants of an old woodland garden that was part of one of the Aster eras. We have no documentation of when that was. But the the remnants are actually there on the ground. You can, this is on the western side of the law, the large lawn area. Or yes, good eastern side of the large lawn area in front of Aster Courts, just tucked into the woods. You can see the the ruined boards and the stream. There are the remnants of an original bridge. And there are a number of stone gardens, kind of stone pathways and some steps up into the the rock out crops that you see there. Next slide. In addition, there's quite a few garden plants that have kind of overgrown in there. So in the springtime, it's quite lush with wooden enemies and daffodils and column vines. We want to work with that same palette and just bring some more order to it. Next one. And so this is a layout plan for this area. You can see the bridge crossing the stream. We're thinking of some type of Adirondack style wooden bridge, which is not unusual for this this type of Hudson River estate. Uh, and then a series of paths that are loosely based and where we can see the the stone stream about. And we have so little as ruins in there, it's hard to really reconstruct what this was. But this is, you know, using their best eye for what we see laying on the ground. And and I can see it also includes some stone steps that go up into the into the rock up crops. Next slide. And this is the planting plan for it. It's just a, it's a wide variety of of wood shaped plants, most of which are are native or for native improved varieties. So so the intention is to make it fairly lush. Next slide. Okay, another area is just really a cleanup effort at the powerhouse down along the river. Um, we had received permits a number of years ago to restore that building. It's actually, if this is a bit in in construction, it's now finished. We want to remove all of the, really the construction aspects of this. The lot of gravel was thrown down across the entire area of the construction. And we'd just like to peel all of that away. Next slide. And just really create a logical sense of paths and parking and just seed for lawn everywhere else. There there really isn't much of a planting plan here. Just really just trying to clean it all out. We would like to put two large stone stone stoops, if you want to call it that, in front of each door. They're really just a large slab of bluestone. We procured a number of up four to six inch large pieces of bluestone, two of which would serve very nicely in front of each one of these doors. Um, and that's, that's all we're planning for for the powerhouse area. Next slide. Uh, and then behind Aster Courts, for them, the south side of the Aster Courts building in two level areas back there, they're proposing two mazes. First one, which we're calling the discovery maze, just this playful fun stuff. This one's called discovery because there are five centers in this. Instead of having one center to the maze, there are five that you can wander around and find independently. We hope to put some interesting object in the center of each one of them. Don't know what that is yet. It might be a small sculpture that our client purchases elsewhere or or a bench or something. I'm just not sure yet. But these are planted hedges. And you can see on the on the left there, we would do it with a product that's grown in Oregon called Instant Hedge. It lives up to its name. They grow hedges in close or like this and prune them over the years and sell them at anywhere from four to six foot in height. We probably get on the higher end of that. So we can quite literally make this an effective hedge from the day that it is installed. It's not a slow growing process when we do it this way. Uh, next slide. Um, this is the the second maze further down the hill from the first one. Um, it is, we're calling it a binary maze. And the reason for this is also being playful with with our clients' interest. It's well known to everyone that our our client has the, you know, made his his life in the world of tech and the internet especially. So this is playing off of some of the fundamental things that make the internet. The the binary is it's it's what all code is structured on ones and zeros. And and the idea of gateways, gate, gateways are what takes all of the the bits of information and makes it actually useful to interact with other other devices. So this this maze has seventeen gates inside of it. Giving the person going through the maze the option to open the door and go through that or pass by it. Just a, you know, a playful metaphor for something which is very much of our client's interest here. So this, this has, as I said, seventeen wooden gates. The gates latch on two different positions. So if you open, you can latch it in, you know, up against the next opening so that the maze actually changes its character. Each person moves through it. And this too is gonna be made with the instant edges. So for us, it would be like five to six foot in height from the day it is installed. Next slide. Okay, this is the last area that we have in this that this part of the application. And there are currently three gates that you see on the left side of this, not actually not that one, it's the other three. Those, those are existing gates and that's all the result of the subdivision of the property. Now that we are one owner in all of this, we'd like to remove three, remove two of them and simply move, you know, those two and the middle one, and then simply move the one that's at the top further up the road so that it's before all of these different junctions with other driveways and in that sense be a more effective security barrier. It's an existing gate, so you would like to see it in photographs. I forgot to actually get that in the application, but we can get that for you. Or the the two word numbers who cannot just be seen. See the site, we'll certainly see what this one looks like. It's just a bluestone wing walls and an iron gate. So that is what we're applying for in this section of our application. Jim, I think if we go back to the beginning, we can just go through each one of them. And if any of the board members have questions.
Um, well, let me, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with Jim. Um, but I also want to say we really didn't fix the problem with your sound. And so I hope we can make it better before we get to public hearing. Because I I was really losing about half of what you were saying. I mean, I've seen it and I appreciate it, but I I think it's something we've got to work on. So Jim, I'll start.
I understand. Yes.
Uh, Jim, do you want to start?
Sure, I can do that. Howard Marcus have a couple kind of clarifying questions and statements. First, just want to point out that this this part of the the master plan, the entire master plan was approved by the planning board as a master plan in July of twenty twenty one. There are some wetland disturbances proposed, a wetland permit has been submitted. I did want to just inquire about any material being removed from the site or plans to bring anything new for some of the landscaping. Is there anything being moved around? It's a substance or is it all this?
Now, this is all that, this is all that grade. We should not have any excavation or fill.
Okay. And a couple other comments you can see when you get a copy of my memo notes. But the only other question I did want to ask is, I did see on sheet four or four. There was a cross section of the the miniature train. I think that was there in error. I just wanted to clarify if that was the case. I don't think the miniature train is part of the submission. It was, it was a
Would be an error.
It was a cross section detail. I don't, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, I wasn't missing something.
There is a cross section detail in sheet one point one one zero. That's of the driveway.
And this was the, this was the mini train on four or four. Again, if it's not in there, I just want to clarify the mini train is not part of the application. That that was my
No, no.
No, yeah, okay. Um, other than that, Melody, just some minor comments they can see on my memo, just that, you know, confirming some things. So I think we're, I'm good.
Okay, and just to remind planning board members, you all have a copy of Jim's memo, so you two can go back and review everything that he's pointing out to us that we should be looking at. So I will open it up now to other members of the planning board for comments or questions, or Mark, if there's anything you want to add. Now's the time to do it.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, good. Thanks. That was quick. Planning board members, any questions or comments of Howard?
Uh, I have a question for Howard. These, uh, the mazes, the follies that you mentioned, is there any historic precedent on the property for the existence of those?
No, no, there are not. Yes, during the master plan application, we addressed that that very topic. We've got some length. Um, the the reason to place the mazes here is because we're we're choosing to do things that were to put things that were not historically present in in Aster's day, we're placing them in areas that were previously disturbed. Not into areas which over history had no disturbance or or we're not, we're not actually affecting any historic land in in any way. So, um, so yes, it's acknowledged that these are a new feature. Um, our argument is that they're not unusual for for an estate home. I mean, they they are not common in most places, but the the property of this scale, they're fitting for that.
Okay. And also the the meadow that you showed, the image of where on the drawing, there was some clearing. It looked like that was a fairly steep slope. And about how much of that clearing is going to involve trees that are greater than six inches D B H?
The trees there are, there may be trees of the of getting up into about the eight inch scale, you know, in in caliber inch. And and the reason for that is is they've been growing for seventy plus years. They've gotten to be that age, but those trees, the important point is those trees were not there in the Astros era. There there is just an area that was left to go fallow. And then we simply want to return it to what we know from historic maps was an open area in Aster's day.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Anyone else from the planning board? Okay, I think we are, we can look at a draft procedural resolution which we have before us. Now, Jim, before we get into it, is this one of the ones that you sent out emails trying to combine site visits?
Yes.
Okay, so when we get to that. When we get to that, we'll bring it up. So.
Okay. Uh, so this is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, you go ahead. I interrupted you.
Okay, so draft procedure resolution for T Court Phase Two A. We'll classify this as a type two action under seeker, which is consistent with what we did under the master plan. We will schedule a public hearing for March twenty first at six fifteen P M. We will be sending this to the C A B and the W A C for their review. This will also go to the H A P A C for review and comment. Uh, we'll also be sending it to the county planning department because it is a site plan submission. And as far as the field visit goes, yes, I did send out an email, I think today, discussing that I'd like to try and see if we can do one site visit for this phase and for two B, so that we can get them done at once instead of doing two separate trips. We'll see if we can make that work.
So we're gonna leave, we're gonna leave four in the resolution open for future scheduling, and we're gonna leave it open for as many members of the planning board who wish to attend. As well as inviting the C A B and H A P A C and whoever also needs to be included. So I I don't know how you want to word that, Jim, but that's the intent here.
Well, we'll delegate all planning board members to attend as we've done in the past.
All right, that works for me. Um, okay, does anybody have any questions about that or any comments? All right, hearing none. Could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So move, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. We'll be in touch. Oh, I made a rhyme. Sorry. Couldn't help myself. All right.
Right, thank you.
Melody, have a quick question. Gretchen, neither Gretchen nor I caught the motion on the Capes procedural resolution. Did we do one or did we just both miss it? It was the prior for all, uh, the prior procedure resolution, I'm sorry.
Well, let's do it again to be sure.
I think, yeah, just to be sure, I'd like to just get a motion. It's like, yeah.
All right, so in Capes, who would like to make a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed abstentions? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, the last new application for the Seaview Grassmere House, twenty nine Mill Road, and this is the change that I think Jim was referring to earlier. The review is for site plan and wetlands permit. The agenda incorrectly includes special use permit. So we're just
Also for an amended site plan.
Okay, so site plan, wetlands permit and amended site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Subdivision two, actually.
All right, we'll get it right. And subdivision. Okay, for country into. And I'm assuming we have Nick with us and possibly Tom.
We do. Good evening. My video, however, is not enabled. It says the host. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
There we go. Welcome.
Excellent.
Perhaps because you are new to this to this project, you might want to introduce yourselves to the planning board members and the public.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Jim. If we can go to the second slide, I'll start with the introduction. Good evening, Nicholas Ward Willis with Keenan Bean, project attorney on behalf of Grassmere House, the applicant, and also authorized representative for property owner, Mench Rhinebeck and Mench Grassmere L L C. We're joined tonight by Tom LaRue, who's our project manager for We're joined tonight by Tom LaRue, who's our project manager for Soho House and Company. And Tom's going to give us a bit more of an introduction when we get into later on into the presentation. We're also joined tonight by John Montaigne, who is our landscape architect and, um, planner with respect to this project and who this board is familiar with from his prior appearances on this project for over the years. We're also joined tonight by Paul Taylor, our project architect from Stonehill Taylor. And Paul may be speaking with respect to some of the architectural elements that Tom is going to describe. And Melody, each of them will be, uh, speaking, so I'll let him give a bit more of an introduction to themselves at that time.
Thank you.
I apologize in advance. We do have a lengthy presentation for you. But as you know, we are seeking, I think in its simplest form, an amendment of a previously approved the 2015 site plan. But this project has a lot of history to it and review and this board is familiar with, and I know there are some. New members on the board and there may well be some members of the public who are not as familiar with this project. So we have decided to. Not start at the beginning, but go back and retell some of this story so that the public and the board members are fully familiar with the project. And it's, um, reviewed approvals over the years because it is in various stages and for example, we do have a special use permit that this board previously issued. And which we have actually done some, some work under. So I'm going to start providing you with an overview of the zoning and the project history. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tom, who's going to lead us through, um, the rehabilitation of the manor house, which is what you see up on the screen before you as a rendering of what we. Envision the manor house would look like upon project completion. And Tom's also going to walk us through the site plan and then, um, John is going to give us an overview of some of the site engineering layouts and provide that overview to the board. So if we can go, Jim, to the, to the next slide. What I, what we put up here on the screen is just an overview of what we have, um, in our February seven submission to the planning board. We're seeking an amendment to the approved 2015 phase one site plan. A, which is really just, uh, moving some of the chess pieces on the board, if you will, maintaining the same approved number of, uh, accommodation units. We're just moving those pieces on the board in response to prior comments from the board and from Shippo. There's a minor subdivision to create the 250 acre parcel for the operation of the previously approved country into pursuant to that special use permit that has been issued. And then the third item is reapproval of the previously approved wetlands permit with some minor amendments to take into account some project modifications. And then fourth item before the planning board is you'll have to do your secret analysis again, that's required before you can take any of those actions and also do your. LWRP consistency review. And Jim, if we can go to the next slide. And I just provided here sort of a very brief overview of, of the zoning for the project. It's classified as a country into. Under the town of Rhinebeck zoning code, which requires a special use permit, which is being issued and we're acting under. The project is a permitted principal use in the rural agricultural district. Subject to site plan approval and special use permit, the country in two requires the 250 acre parcel, which is proposed to be subdivided out of the existing 500 under the ownership. Of Mench Grassmere and the property for zoning purposes located in the rural agricultural zoning district, the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, the Estates District, Scenic Area statewide significance. And the town of Rhinebeck local waterfront revitalization area. All of this zoning analysis was previously examined since 2013 when the application was previously submitted. And I will turn now to the next slide where we have sort of an overview. So in June of 2013 was the application for the adaptive reuse of the grassmere forums estate. Including the master plan, site plan and special use permit. And so your zoning code recognizes that for historic manor homes, properties like this, to continue their existence in the community, the, the ability to adaptively reuse them, in this case, a country into. And Tom's going to provide you some of those details as to how that's being done. So that process began in 2013, your board was the lead agency. And you undertook over two year process at a generic environmental impact review. Which was prepared by the applicant, you held public hearings, it was reviewed by the planning board as the lead agency. And then you accepted the draft and then the final generic environmental impact statement for the proposed, uh, development of this country and two on the grassmere property. In March of 2014, the planning board adopted the finding statement, you completed the secret review. And then you determined were there any potential significant adverse environmental impacts and how were those impacts going to be mitigated? And you set forth those mitigation measures and findings in your finding statement. At that time, you also approved a country in two for 110, um, accommodation units. And that is a special permit that is still, um, in existence and which has been reissued over the years. August 17th, 2015, having received the. Secret findings and the special use permit, the next phase was to get a site plan approval. How are those buildings going? To be laid out on the land with respect to the operation of the country into. And a wetlands permit was also issued and you're still the lead agency, so that obligation to do your secret review. You issued an amended finding statement because you now had some more project specific details regarding the phase one site plan and the, and the wetlands permit. So in October 5th of 2015, you renewed that special permit for the country into. And then in February of 2017, these previously approved site plan was split into two phases, a phase one and a phase. Phase one A and phase one B, the special use permit was amended to reflect that. And then there was a certificate of removal or demolition as it titled. For the garage building that was issued back in 2017. And again, all for the, that was process. Your planning board with your consultants reviewed the project, met with the applicant, held public hearings and, and vetted the project. If we can go, Jim, to the next slide. In June of 2018, there was again another amended finding statement that was issued, uh, reaffirmed and approvals were issued. Likewise in 2019, because each time when the project had a certain number of months, 18 month board, um, approvals, your board had to ensure that there had been no changes. And then in March of 2020, the site plan was signed, uh, by the chairman. And then that triggered the special use permit and certain other approvals that, um. Grassmere, uh, Mench Grassmere then activated upon. And so in 2020 and 2021, there was work that was underway pursuant to the special use permit that had been issued as well as the site plan approval that had been issued. And some of that work is listed on the screen before you. The DOT issued a highway work permit for grading, tree clearing and general access point construction along what we call the. Eastern entrance of the northern portion of the project on route nine. If you've driven by that area, you've seen the. The work that's been done with the site clearing and opening up that entranceway and as Tom will detail, those stone piers will be reestablished at the appropriate, uh, appropriate time soon. DEC issued a speedy permit for stormwater management of the, that's being paid for in the notice of intent filed and the work being done pursuant to that and all the regulatory requirements that DEC being implemented. Building permits were obtained for pouring of, uh, certain foundations for the. And permits are being, uh, pursued in the coming weeks for interior site work related to the restoration of the historic manor house. And so all that leads us up to why we're here to you today is the February 2022 submission of the amended site plan subdivision and wetlands permit application. So we can continue the work pursuant to the previous issued special permit and in site plan. So, Jim, if you go to the next slide. We've summarized. What's part of Grassmere House's 2022 amended site plan? So when the project gets completed, just to give you a, a brief summary and Tom, we're going to go into the details. It's going to be the rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of the existing grassmere manor house, which we showed you a rendering of it on the first slide. The rehabilitation, the adaptive reuse of the existing stone barn and carriage house. Into a top restaurant, pool and casual dining facilities, again establishing in accordance with your zoning code, the country into. That we're adaptively reusing these historic properties and in this case as a top restaurant, pool and casual dining facilities. Also going to be construction of four woodland accommodations and 17 lawn accommodations consistent with the. Previous, um, number of units that were approved in the prior approvals that I've referenced. There will be a spa facility, which will feature an array of spa treatments and wellness programs, which are inspired and in keeping with the farm settings and the Hudson Valley location. And as you would expect, they're supporting infrastructure such as parking, a wastewater treatment plant area, um, reception area and back of house building. All of which although are part of a submitted plan, had been looked at, looked at and reviewed by the planning board in one form or another. At the prior iterations since 2013. And we've, uh, provided some of that analysis and the materials that have been submitted, uh, to you. If we can go, Jim, to the next slide. Excuse me, there was a proposal that had been submitted in 2020 and that's shown on the left of the screen. And then had proposed in the north and upper property, some agricultural areas, um, more housing that you'll see, creation of three ponds. That was withdrawn, that is not this plan. You see the amended 2022 plan is smaller in scale, it's reduced, it's more focused. And it's part of what was, uh, previously approved. So we can move on to the next slide, Jim, but I did want to make it clear. That the 2020 plan has been withdrawn and some of the lessons learned from that and the comments received have been helpful. We've incorporated that. Into the 2022 amendments and I've summarized them here. For example, Mill Road would not be used as an access point. So we're discontinuing vehicular access at Mill Road. When we get into the site plan review, we'll discuss with you, it will probably be just in keeping that historic area, but put entrance area and putting a chain across to prevent. Access for vehicular purposes to be pedestrian and presume emergency access if that is, is needed, but that's not the main. That is not an area, that vehicular access. Restoration of the historic southern entrance on route nine is the main access point for the guests. So the intent here and Tom will detail this is that all. Vehicles for the guests will arrive at the southern entrance, which is being restored. Parked there, there will be no vehicular traffic, um, up by the manor house, which as you may recall, there was previously going to be parking and cars by the manor house that's been removed. The third item is the eastern entrance on New York State Route nine will be reserved just as a staff and service entrance. We're removing, as I mentioned, the parking areas away from the manor house. That was a comment that was received. Likewise, the maintenance building and parking for employees was in that front lawn as you came in off of Mill Road near the manor house. That's being removed so that the manor house really stands, stands by itself and does not have the parking or the maintenance shed buildings that were previously proposed. In conversations with Shippo and comments received from the, from the town. Um, the previously approved 17 lawn accommodations were closer to the manor house and within that view shed. And so those have been, um, relocated to the west of the manor house fervent and fervent to the south within the tree line, preserving that view shed. But putting the cabins still there and as part of this project. We're also proposing construction of a wastewater treatment plant on the western portion of the site. Which is an upgrade from the previously approved onsite septic system. And finally, there will be a construction of a guest reception area, check-in building at the southern entrance. Uh, of, of the property where the guests will arrive. If we go to the next slide, Jim, what we've provided to you here is an overlay of the 2015 plan along with the 2022 plan to show you. Sort of where we're changing things, moving those chess pieces on the board. So in black is, um. What is now proposed in red was what was previously proposed. And if we go to the next slide, we have a better, uh, better inlet. So you can see it in more detail. I appreciate on these. TV screens, zoom screens, it's more difficult, but on this page you'll see, for example, in the northern, to the north of the manor house, we've removed in red. And I know, Jim, if you can show with your cursor or someone highlight that, but previously approved parking area along the circle there. And then to the right of that, to the east, the maintenance area and parking has all been moved out and away from the manor house and relocated to the east. Where Jim's cursor is, where that's where the maintenance shed, the back of house and employee parking is by the eastern entrance. And then likewise, you'll see that the, to the, to the west. Where we show with the red and the black, the cabins along the lawn accommodations have been, uh, spread out and moved away from the view shed and put more into the tree line. And so you'll see, we're really just moving the pieces around on the board and we've taken all that parking and put it at the historic southern entrance. And at this point, I'm going to ask Tom LaRue to introduce himself and then, um, we go to the next slide, Jim, and Tom's going to talk us through the manor house rehabilitation and the site plan amendment itself.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for, for taking the time. Uh, like Nick said, my name's Tom LaRue, uh, Rhinebeck residence. And I'm leading the project management efforts for the development of this project for the intended developer and operator, uh, Soho House Inc. So happy to be here today. I'm going to run through basically all the site plan, kind of the modifications that we have, give you a vision, our vision for the site. Uh, as well as basically what drew us to the site in the first place, uh, which is the great historic buildings that are on the property. Uh, first of which is the manor house. So it's, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, this is dates back to the late 1700s, the original construction. Approximately 16,000 square feet. Uh, Jim, if you want to go to the next slide, there's a couple of images of its current condition. It has sat empty, had to leave for about 10 years. Uh, it's in rough shape, but we believe we can, we are the right people to basically give this. A nod to the past and give it a new life for the future. So what you'll see here is the exterior, what we're proposing is a full restoration of the exterior, everything that can be salvaged and be reused as original. The intention is to do so. Same thing for the interior with the exception of the second and third floor, which we have minor modifications to, uh, the demising walls. The intent for the interior is to work with, uh, the state historic preservation office and do a full restoration of this building. If you go to the next slide, there's just a couple of proposed floor plans of which I want to highlight a couple of minor changes to it. So what you see. Basement level, basically what you see there is the footprint of the basement that exists right now. Uh, existing in the basement is an old, uh, an old. Retail kitchen, uh, some mechanical space and kind of some just old laundry facilities. We basically want to clear that all out, um, restabilize the building with new foundations. Uh, and basically what we're proposing down there is back of house services for this building and also support the rest of the site. Level one, which you see in the top left corner there, floor plan stays exactly as it is today. Full restoration going back to, we, we pulled historic photos from, uh, the historic society. And basically anything that can be maintained, uh, we plan to maintain and restore. On the second and third floor is where we make minor modifications to give this building new life. So what's currently broken down into 14 separate rooms. We're basically proposing to turn into 12 guest rooms, six on the second floor and six on the third floor. Can't tell clearly from this plan because it's small, but in the application documents that we submitted, you'll be able to see the minor modifications to the interior demising walls. That Paul Taylor and team have kind of creatively worked around in order to make this kind of six, uh, night size guest rooms for what we hope to be our guests. Let's go to the next slide, Jim. On the outside, unfortunately, the front porch, the great front porch, uh, it has been condemned. It's structurally unstable. It's causing most of the foundation issues that we have in the basement, water mitigation and everything. What we plan to do here is basically dismantle the front porch in its current state, salvage whatever we possibly can and then rebuild it as close to exactly what we see there right now. Um, other modifications you'll see on the bottom left-hand screen, overtime, bottom right-hand, sorry. Over time, there's two existing windows that had been infilled, uh, and we're basically proposing to basically restore the windows that were, they were there historically. Those will be the only two new windows on the whole project, uh, and we, as we intend to basically restore all of the existing windows. Of which I have two mockups coming to the site tomorrow, uh, and I've got a sneak peek of those, they cleaned up well despite being however old they are. Go to the next, next slide. So what we're going to go through and I'll keep referencing it is the amended site plan of the whole, and I'll talk through kind of each program element of, of the overall site plan. If you go to the next slide, it kind of gives an overview of the project as a whole. So. The components are broken into these seven main, main parts. The first of which is the manor house, which you just talked about. That'll contain ultimately public space on the first floor and then 12 bedrooms, six on the second floor, six on the third floor. For a total of 12 bedrooms. The woodland accommodations, which is labeled as number two on this plan and, and Jim, I don't know if you can see the number two, but it's just north of that, that lake pond there. So four new buildings, two two bedrooms and two three bedrooms are proposed there, of which we have some renderings later on in the slideshow to give you a look at what we're kind of thinking those will look like. So total, it's had bedrooms that we're calling the woodland accommodations. Next, we have the barn complex, which has two existing barns, dates back to the early 1900s. We have the main stone barn, uh, to the south. And then we have flanking that, the carriage house, uh, to the north. And then there's remnants of the old, I don't know what you call it, but it's an old stone wall that jumps off to the south of the main barn. Uh, that used to be where the horses kind of had their hay. I don't know the proper terminology for it, but we're reimagining that. We're calling it the barbecue shack, look at your like live fuel, open fire pit, uh, cooking to service the south of the manor house lawn. Number four is like Nick talked about, the reestablishing of the historic southern entrance to the south. So from that, we would basically reestablish what was the historic entrance as an existing carriage road down there. We're tucking our guest parking as far away from the site as possible and out of visibility from route nine. And then we have two modest buildings, the check-in building and a, uh, we're calling a luggage storage building to the left. Number six, we have the spa. This is located in same location as what was previously approved in 2015. It's roughly 6,000 square feet. Uh, it'll have the, the variety of, of treatment rooms as well as, um, uh, relaxation pools. And then we have the 17 buildings to the west of the manor house, of which are made up of different accommodation types totaling 26 bedrooms. And again, we'll get into a little more detail on those as we go through the presentation. So overall, we have a total of 48 bedrooms, uh, which is obviously like Nick said earlier, this is not the application that you guys saw in 2020. Uh, which had larger scale and everything else going with it. So what we have here, 48 total bedrooms made up into 21 new buildings for accommodation. Do you go to the next slide? Okay, so first thing is the amended site entrance. As we touched on the planned north entrance earlier, those of you drive by, you saw that we reestablished this, uh, late last year. So we tend to reconstruct that. So we plan to reconstruct that, and that would serve as the back of house entrance as well as our staff parking. To the south, we have what was, this is new to this plan, but what, what we found over time is that there's an existing carriage road that ultimately led out to, to Route nine. So what we're planning to do, and we have an application in the DOT, is to basically reestablish that southern entrance for our guest parking. So John Montane will get into a little bit more of the detail of that. But basically, guests would come down Route nine, enter into the property, park at the southern entrance parking lot, and that would be as far as kind of outside vehicles go on the property. Any vehicle access that would be in the property would be our own kind of armed vehicles or, or service vehicles. Go to the next slide. Just to just give you a visual, kind of an artist rendition of, of that northern entrance. So right now, obviously, as you drive by, you'll see we have not reconstructed the two brick tiers, but we plan to do so once the weather turns. And that just gives you an idea of kind of the subtle entrance off of Route nine of the northern entrance. Next slide. Okay, so the stone barn complex, here's where we get into the adaptive reuse of the historic barns and the carriage house on the property. So again, they date back to nineteen oh one. And we're envisioning the main barn is basically a food and beverage outlet hub. So restaurant, commercial kitchen, lounge space, dining, kind of a commercial comfortable atmosphere overall. And then the carriage house, we envision as kind of a speakeasy type food and beverage offering with a bar and kind of small intimate music performances. Go to the next slide. Just give you an artist rendering of what we hope it to be. So it shows that basically full restoration on the exterior, new roofing. And we're adding basically, we're proposing to add a small trellis area just to activate what is now kind of a, an empty courtyard that kind of frames the, the main barn and the carriage house. You get a tiny glimpse of what that looks like there. Go to the next slide. So the south lawn. So historically, this was, this is what, what this is showing here is kind of how we envision the planning of this. So what you have here is the existing stone barn, the, where you can see barbecue shacks to the left, that's the existing stone wall that used to have the kind of the, the horse feedings, et cetera, whatever you'd want to call it. And what we're proposing to do, where you see here, where we're proposing to flip the pool, historically, there was a barn there. So we're kind of playing off the, the history of the site and kind of giving it new life. I like to say we took the old barn that's there, flipped it upside down, and we're basically planning to activate the southern lawn with a, a pool area. Go to the next slide. Here is a artist's rendition of what it could look like. Don't pay attention to the furniture, pay attention to the nice swimming pool, nice subtle, the nice subtle kind of in-ground pool. It's both fifty yards long and it, and it matches up with the length of the stone, the stone wall to the left. Go to the next slide, which is just another shot. This would be if you're look, if you're on, looking up against that stone wall, looking to the pool, looking onto the pool the other direction. Go to the next slide. Okay, the spa. So what we're going to talk, again, we're highlighting back here. So this is, the next photo, you'll see there's an existing old garage, nonhistoric garage, we plan to take down, and that would be where the spa is located. Like I said earlier, it's about six thousand square feet, and it's going to consist of a reception and changing room, a gym and studio, various treatment rooms, and then a wet area glass. So go to the next slide. The location here, I just wanted to give this a reference, and you can see it's a little bit lower than the grade of the manor house, so it's down in the property. And you can see from the design of it, we've actually taken into account all the historic trees that are in this area. So basically what we're planning to do, take that green, nonhistoric garage down and that, and then build a new spa building around the existing trees, which if you go to the next slide, you'll get a good rendering of kind of how that base planning went into play. Yeah, right. So what you're seeing on the left is a, again, an aerial view and artist, artist rendering of the proposed spa building. What you're seeing on the right is the proposed floor plan, of which you have the technical documents in black and white and the application that we submitted two weeks ago. Next slide. Two more, so there's two more artist renderings, just to give you kind of look and feel of what we're envisioning for the spa. This would be the inner courtyard of the connecting buildings as they go around those existing trees. And for the next one, it's, it's kind of a vision or, or feel of what we envision for the relaxation pool part of the project. Next slide. Okay, so accommodations. So everything that you see here, we went over kind of on the first page, but I just wanted to kind of highlight the different accommodation types throughout the property. So aside from the manor house that we talked about, we have to the right-hand side on the top of the existing ponds, we have four new buildings, two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. To the left, flanking the tree lines of the manor house, we have various accommodation types ranging from what we're calling hut cabins up to two bedrooms, as well as some studio accommodations. And as we go through these slides, you'll have a floor plan and an artist rendering of basically the proposed architecture. If you can go to the next slide. Okay, so the woodland accommodations. What you have here is you have two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms, of which we plan to basically have the exterior architectural look similar to the stone barns on the property. Similar kind of layout, the difference really between the two and three bedroom is the addition of, I call them the side cards. But you have the main kind of structure of the building, and then you have one side car for the two-bedroom and a second side car for the three-bedroom, kind of playing off kind of some consistency with the architecture. So these work on the woodland cabins, again, two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. You go to the next slide. Into now the lawn accommodations. So working with the existing topography and the existing trees, the goal is to obviously not disturb as many trees as possible. So we're proposing pure foundations and working with the topography that exists on the site, of which the one bedrooms that we're looking at here play in nicely with the steep topography to the west of the manor house. So we have four buildings, a total of four bedrooms for these one-bedroom accommodations. You can kind of see they sit up on tilt as the topography goes down, so you enter at grade level. And actually, the living arrangements or accommodations are at the, at the bottom part of it. Next slide. Just now, we just stepped into, into winter as we're looking at the renderings to the right. So these are our large studios. Four buildings, four bedrooms. This is kind of open concept, more open concept for, for families, where you don't have that kind of separate bedroom and you kind of have, you know, a living area that kind of ties into the bedroom as well as a small kitchenette that goes along with it. So four buildings, four bedrooms in our large studio accommodation. Next slide. Okay, now we're into the spring with the rendering. So we have our studio accommodation. So this is two rooms, one building for a total of ten bedrooms. So on the site plan, you'll see labeled as studios, there's five separate buildings of which are broken into a more economical key or, or, or bedroom. So this would be basically two separate guests would rent this, one on, one on the left, one on the right. So five buildings, ten total bedrooms as part of the lawn accommodation. Next slide. And then we go into our, our most economical key, if you call it on the property. So again, we have three buildings, two keys per building, and the key, just for everybody, a key is basically a hotel key. So as you, as you rent it, right? So sorry if it's a, the new word. But we have, so three buildings, total of six bedrooms for our hut accommodation. And this is, like I said earlier, our most economical key. So typical kind of hotel setup where you have just a bed and a bathroom, no kitchen accommodation, kitchenette at all. Next slide. I think that might be the last one actually on, on that. So yeah, so that's, I know I've talked rather quick and happy to answer any questions that people might have, but just wanted to give you a quick overview and kind of the the vision for the property that we see, give it back to Nick, go through the boring summary required of approval.
Certainly, Tom, that's exciting, is looking at the nice rendering. So thank you. What I wanted to do was sort of pause here before we get to John Montane's presentation on some of the engineering and then site planning issues, and go back and talk about the summary of the required approvals. Tom gave us a very quick overview of the project, and I hope it came across when you think about the comparison sheet that we put up there comparing the twenty twenty-two plan with twenty fifteen, you really are just moving around some of the pieces. And those are all areas that had been previously examined. The number of lawn unit accommodations remaining the same, number of woodlands accommodations remaining the same. So when you look at the summary of a required approvals, the first step you'll need to do is your secret determination. Is, and, and I've got a couple of slides at the end that I'll go for a bit more detail because we did provide you with some substantive text going through that, but you're, as you remain the lead agency, and you will then need to make a determination as to whether the impacts that, if there are any new impacts that would need to be further examined that aren't supported by our, by our materials. You have to again go back and do your LWRP consistency because it's remaining a country into, because it's really just continuing what has been previously approved. We submit that you would find that it is again consistent with your waterfront policies. And we'll go through that with you at one of your meetings and provide you with some more documentation to confirm that. The subdivision approval is on my next slide where we're just creating the two hundred and fifty acres that requires a public hearing, and it's a minor subdivision, and then site plan approval, the wetlands permit will need to be examined and issued again. So if we go to the next slide, we have up on the screen the subdivision approval. So to create the two hundred and fifty acres, we're doing a lot merger, a lot line adjustment, and then a subdivision. So up at the top of the screen, Jim, if you go to the top, the northern portion, you'll see there's a ten-acre parcel. Yeah, that's really the salmon colored. That lot line is being removed. So that ten-acre parcel is being merged with the existing five hundred and ten acre parcel. The westerly boundary line of the five hundred and ten acre parcel is being moved to the west where you have the yellow and darker blue project along the left side there. So that's your lot line adjustment for those two lots. And then the final subdivision is along the bottom middle of the screen where we're proposing to create the two lots. And that's your two lot subdivision, if you will, but this does involve for five lots or with the, with the merger and the two lot line adjustments in the subdivision. And so the pink salmon colored will be the two hundred and fifty acre country into lot, and that is the subdivision application that is before you. It's been previously studied and examined through your secret. So there's really no new impacts. I will mention that we are mindful that along the blue and yellow colored parcels along the west, there's a conservation easement with the Windicke Land Trust. There were discussions previously. We've continued those discussions and we'll be meeting with them this week to review this with them. It shouldn't, it doesn't impact them because the lands are subject to the conservation easement. But we will be discussing with them those terms, and they have a new template agreement that we'll enter into as well, and we'll keep the board updated as to those discussions and also provide you with what we hope will be a concurrence letter from them that they they have no objection to the subdivision and the conservation easement is of course remaining in, remaining in place. So if we go to the next slide, I'm going to ask, turn it over to John Montane, who's going to give you a, a review of the site engineer plans before turning it back to me. John?
Done. You're muted, John. That was a great introduction and, and you didn't hear it. John Montane with Reiman Peterson, landscape architects and engineers. If you go to the next slide, I have just five slides that I'm going to go through very quickly here. The engineering on this obviously is being reviewed with, with the town's consultants. First thing I wanted to note here is that in this submission, we provided two additional plans that we haven't in previous times. We've done a natural resources plan, and we've done a development impact plan. And this is primarily to make it easy for the board and the review engineers and planners to see what we have as natural features on the site and then any impacts to those. So on this plan, you'll see there is a, there is one New York State DEC wetland, which is the dark purple on the, on the west side of the property. That was delineated by New York State DEC, and they determined their limits. All the other wetlands on the site are Army Corps of Engineers regulated wetlands that are also regulated by the town. All of the wetlands do have a hundred-foot buffer requirement. The town's buffers are what are included in the wetlands permit. And back in two thousand and fifteen, we did apply for a wetlands permit. It showed the impacts to the, to the buffer areas. We have resubmitted that in this, in this application, and again, identifies where all those wetland buffer impacts are, only buffer impacts, no impacts to the wetlands itself. In addition to that, this plan also shows the tree inventory that was done for all the, there are some very beautiful historic trees, some hickories and other rather large, beautiful trees that are on the site that are being maintained. A lot of effort went into the design to make sure that those are preserved, and Tom told you a little bit about that with the discussion about how the spa was laid out. The clearing that's associated with our project is then shown on this drawing also in the light green shade. And then we also identified here how the view shed is maintained. The view shed from both the stone barn and from the manor house have been preserved. Next slide, please. So as was mentioned earlier, there are planned water improvements and wastewater improvements for the site that are a little different. Right now, we are, you know, as has been mentioned, there's negotiations going on with the village to secure a final water agreement with them. In a, in a slide that I'll show you briefly here, there are some improvements in the village water system that we're undertaking with the goal of getting a six-inch service all the way from the, the storage tank in the village down to our property. And that six-inch line in our hydraulic analysis provides us the water that we need for both fire protection and for domestic service. On the site, there'll be about eight thousand five hundred feet of new water line. Largest will be six inches and it'll go down as it needs to, to service the various buildings. Was also noted that we're getting away from subsurface septic system designs that were in the original phase one design and going with a, an onsite wastewater treatment plant. The plant that we're proposing to use is, is from a company named Streamgo. Streamgo has other plants of similar size in other locations in Dutchess County that have been approved by the Dutchess County Health Department, and that's really the primary reason why we're going with them. They have a system that's been pre-approved in the county, and we believe it'll be the best system for us. The discharge from that wastewater plant will be to a constructed wetland, and then from that constructed wetland to a tributary that's on the property that then feeds to the landsman hill. Our collection system for the various buildings and accommodations on the site is all going to be done through a low-pressure sewer system. And the primary reason for that is that these systems are small diameter lines buried at a standard approximately five foot depth. A lot of it can be directionally drilled, and we can keep our impacts to trees and other features on the site to a minimum by using that type of system. It'll be about seven thousand one hundred feet of that in our design. Next slide, please. As we've noted, one of the goals of this project is to be, to have a light footprint on land and preserve as much as we can. And we've incorporated that into our stormwater management design as well. Some of the bigger components of that stormwater system and use is, includes using a significant amount of porous pavements. Rouspavements allow us to do linear walkways, driveways, pathways without having to have larger stormwater collection and drainage systems associated with it. In addition to that, we're using practices called linear dry swales, crevallo diaphragms for water quality along, along the walkways and pathways. Shallow infiltration basins, you'll see there's some light gray, green areas on this. The good idea is to have them blend in with the natural landscape. So there'll be shallow depressions that drain that will have vegetation in them, and they'll look very much like the natural contours. So we don't have large basins sticking out throughout the landscape. We've respected the natural drainage patterns. Everything flows where it did before. And in all cases, we are either at or below pre-development runoff rates. So next slide. As I mentioned, we do have to do some improvements to the village water system. Right now, there are old four-inch lines that connect between us and, and where the main water source is in the, in the village. So starting up in the village itself, there are some improvements. There are then some improvements along Mill Street, which is Route nine. And then finally, on Mill Road itself. We're increasing the line to a six-inch minimum. As I noted before, we're tying into the ten-inch line that's up at the intersection of Arnett Road and Huntington Road in the village. Then there'll be a number of four-inch line replacements. There's a new six-inch line at Arnett Violet. There is another six inch from Asher to Mill Street. And the final one is a six-inch line that will be upgraded on, from Mill Street intersection up to the project on Mill Road. Next slide. My last slide is just to discuss briefly the southern entrance. As Tom alluded to, there is a beautiful old historic stone wall that is all sort of in disrepair at the southern entrance. There's a, there's an old iron gate down there. The goal will be to reclaim that as we have the other peers on the, on the eastern entrance and reestablish those. As far as the design goes, we did submit the DOT application to DOT back in October. And the reason for that is it takes a very long time to get the DOT to approve and review projects like this, and we really wanted to get ahead of that. We are aligning this intersection with the commercial drive that is across the street from it. This is in the area where the state highway goes from a four-lane to a two-lane road. The beauty of that is that we have a wide right of way that's already paved here. And our analysis of the intersection using a high-yield traffic volume of what a, of a potential And our analysis of the intersection um using a high yield uh traffic volume of what a of potential hypothetical full build up could be. Really just suggests the need for some uh lane restriping. And it gives us the ability to get a left turn northbound lane in with just restriping. And what this also does is it pushes the four lane to two lane uh transition further south on Route nine. So you know, one of the things that has always been discussed is it's trying to reduce and calm the traffic coming into the village. This actually will help because it'll push a little bit further. There'll be a turn lane that people will recognize. There'll be a longer tapering transition. Right now, the two lane to four lane is a very short distance. Um, and then I think also with the introduction of a a new gateway uh and some other life in this area. It should help in the in the traffic calming coming into the village and clearly it'll be beneficial for us. And uh, so that's what I have on the on the engineering side. Don't wanna go too much more. We'll. Be working with uh CPL and with Jim's firm as we go through this and and we get into more of the engineering review. So I'll turn it back to you, Nick.
Great, thank you, John. And then the final part of our presentation is just if we go to the next slide, Jim, is just to talk about the secret review and and on the next slide. So before the board can grant any approvals or consider the approvals, it needs to establish, we need to establish to the board satisfaction. That our proposed project, the amendment that we've discussed tonight are not having any significant adverse environmental impacts. And that or that they have not been um mitigated um by by the prior findings or within the studies that we've established. So in 2014, when you did the G E I S, when you issued the finding statement and when you looked at this, each of the other years that we. Uh, referenced there was an amended finding statement. The board looked at the 14 areas that are up on the screen. Some of them, I'm not gonna go for four fourteen, but as you can imagine, land use and zoning, it's not changing. We're a country into a remaining that way. Energy and utilities. Remain the same, water and water supply, et cetera. So a lot of these categories. Um, while you need to look at them, it's gonna be a quick review because there really is no change on on the surface. Um, traffic, you'll certainly wanna look at because of the the new entrance way that Tom just that um Tom and John described. But again, that's also within the purview DOT. If we go to the next slide. Jim, what we put up on the screen here is we recognize that there's a a lot of information we provided tonight and we've also provided to the board. And all of this information that's listed here supports the environmental review that you, the planning board is lead agency is charged with. And so to assist the board in this review, we've provided this information, which I hope is in a clear, clear way that helps you undertake your charge. And a lot of key documents, the project narrative, that's our version, our summary of the application and what we're doing here and how it. Amends the previously approved site plan and implements the special use permit that is being issued and acted upon. The full environmental assessment form is of course for required identification of the potential environmental areas. And what we did is we went through, um, I'm not gonna go through any of it tonight, a forty seven page document. That is a what we call a secret technical memorandum where we compare the impacts from the 2015 amended finding statement, the last. Meaty substantive finding statement this board issued. And talk and discuss and review how our amended site plan interacts with that document with the previously amended finding statement. And we've also did the same before waterfront consistency review and we provided those other documents that are that are on the screen that you're receipt of and which we'll review with you and your proposals. Coming um, one or two. If we can go, Jim, to the to the next slide, this is just sort of my overview of. What we believe our submission has done, that we've updated documents from the secret standpoint that describes any change to the environmental setting, because you need to know that. What was approved in 2015 and what are we uh proposing now and how does that impact your the environmental review? We've identified any potential new environmental impacts as a result of the changes in the project and outlined mitigation measures um that would be implemented. And if we go to the next slide, we would uh submit that our forty seven page uh secret tech uh technical memorandum establishes that we propose project modifications. Don't raise any new significant adverse environmental impacts, which were not addressed in the prior environmental review taken over the several years from twenty thirteen onwards. That a supplemental environmental impact statement is not required. There's no need to do any further studies of them that we've submitted. In there, which your consultants will review and most importantly, that the project modifications are consistent with the twenty fourteen finding statements, twenty fifteen amended. And the reaffirmation of the amended finding statements that you issued in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So you know, we've submitted in conclusion that we look forward to working on behalf of Grassmere House with. The board and the consultants and hearing from the public as we go through this process for the minor subdivision. The wetlands permit and the what I would characterize as a minor amendment to the previously approved site plan. And uh, we look forward to working with you and answer any questions you may have uh tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, gentlemen, for a very comprehensive reintroduction to this project. Um, I I know that Jim uh has prepared at least several pages of. Comments in our notes and Jim, I, you know, I turned to you to ask if you wanna summarize that, but also. Went out to my colleagues on the planning board that these notes are available for you to read in depth. You know, following the meeting just to orient yourself to the things that Jim was looking for. So Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Mel. So you know, most of my comment, a lot of my comments, I should say, are just kind of clarifications and my thoughts on on a number of the items um proposed. In this plan. So I'm not gonna go through those tonight and um, you know, those of you from Grassmere House who get a copy of the memo, so you can see some of my thoughts on this. Um, a lot of this is kind of clarifying things and just pointing out some things. So you know, in general, um, related to the subdivision, I took a look at the proposals for the subdivision. Um, I don't really see any issues with them as long as the planning board is provided with something from Winnicke Land Trust, as you noted before stating that they are okay with with what's being proposed. Otherwise, don't really see any issues um at this point with the subdivision. Um, I just had a number of comments on on a bunch of things. Um, one of them that I will be looking at again, you you pretty much touched on all of these. Um, the Mill Road entrance is not going to be a vehicular access, which is a big change from what was previously proposed based on what we heard from the public, which is, I think, good. Um, I I do think though, from my perspective as a planner, you know, definitely talking to the fire department to see if they want that as emergency access um is something we should look into. Uh, you do have the two accesses off Route nine, but should something happen on Route nine, I think they should at least have the ability to get in Mill Road. Um, not that that's definitely necessarily the preferable way, um, because it's not gonna be paved and the other entrances would be easier, but I do think it's something to discuss. Uh, so just wanted to put that out there. Um. I did wanna note that, you know, this application, and again, you mentioned this is for significantly less, you know, built out than was previously proposed uh to the application in front of the planning board last time. Um, what else? One of the things I didn't see on the plan, and this may just be a technicality or maybe I missed is I couldn't differentiate. Um, I actually couldn't tell on the plans if if the area proposed, but between the parking spaces, I should say, in the parking area down in the south end. And even the other ones, if they're proposed as grass islands or some other material or an infiltration basin. So if we can just, you know, discuss that as we move forward as a clarification. Um, another thing related to that is, and it was actually in your presentation is where you were proposing the pervious pavement. Uh, it was listed in there. I just don't don't know that I could tell from the black and white where it was. So we can get into that. It's just a a minor issue, but it was certainly well. Um, shown on the the presentation here. Um, did wanna note that the wetland delineation again that you talked about was done uh several years ago. That'll have to be redone, but you agreed to do that. So there are no issues with that related to the code. Um. And I just had a couple other issues uh related to the natural resources plan sheets. Um, John, that you discussed. We could probably talk about those offline again. I think it may be just some labeling things or maybe I just didn't quite uh see what was on there. We don't need to take the time tonight. Um, because you did discuss that those plans are there. So everyone has seen those. Um, and then the only other question I had is um just kind of a standard question for these these commercial type projects is. I did see some narrative related to ADA accessibility. I assume every structure that needs to be ADA accessible is going to be. And that that is something you'll take care of on your end. I don't do a detailed ADA review. Just wanna mention that, you know, that is something we would expect you to undertake and assume you will.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, and if I could just, yeah, if I could just touch on that, because I didn't, I didn't mention that in the manor host development, one of the changes, there's an old. Uh, dumb later shaft that basically was a service shaft that got you from the basement to the third floor. Uh, we are proposing to enlarge that existing open opening so that we can provide ADA access to to all of the floors. As well as a a very nicely disguised wheelchair lift that would be off to the side of the new front porch as part of the manor house. And to Jim, to your point, we do have an ADA consultant on board that we've been working with in terms of providing ADA accommodation to the. Appropriate amount of accommodations on the site.
Okay, that that sounds good and certainly, you know, as it relates to any changes to the to the manor house or even the stone barns, um, that'd be something I'm, you'll be discussing with AIPAC. Um, just to get their input on it, but certainly that's, you know, that's an ADA accessibility issue, we understand.
Yep, yeah, and we're performing, like I mentioned in the state, we are working with the state historic preservation office, so look forward to working with AIPAC as part of that. Part of that process, right? And I think like, like I alluded to, I think you'll find that we're kind of respecting that and then um uh the historic nature of the site, so. So it drew us to it and we plan to kind of give it, give it new life.
Melody, that's my quick run through. Like I say, most of it is mainly comments for the planning board. Um, and we'll work on some of these minor technical issues as we move forward.
Okay, so I would turn to my colleagues on the planning board to see if there are any really important questions you need. You're just dying to have answered tonight. I can assure you, there will be more opportunities as we move forward, although I know the applicant um is hoping for an aggressive. Um, a review application process, so uh you can expect to see them quite a bit going forward. But is there anybody from the planning board that would like to comment or ask any questions? Okay, um, I wanna thank you all for the presentation. I think it was very comprehensive and very well done and. I think there are a lot of people who have been anxious um to see this project come back before us and and to be able to move ahead. So. Thank you for all the work you've put into it. Um, Jim, I think we have a draft procedural resolution. Let me not miss that. Okay, you have the real resolution before you. Uh, Gretchen, the date will be the same again. Is that correct?
Yes.
So that will be, tell me again, three, I've lost it.
Twenty first.
Three twenty one at uh.
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen. And are we then hoping, Jim, again, to schedule a all-board site visit?
I think that would be useful uh with the entire planning board and AIPAC, uh, be given C A B, W A C. We'll try and try and do it. You know, I think it's it's useful for everyone to get together uh all at once and and try and do as few trips as as needed um for the applicants as well.
All right.
So I will work, um, I'm sorry, I said, I, you know, if it's okay with you, Tom, John and Nick, I'll work with you guys to try and schedule that all, you know, so we can. Just kind of be the contact running through me instead of lots of emails flying around. Um.
We're gonna do that. If you give us some suggested dates, we'll work with you, accommodate that.
All right, so so the resolution will be to delegate the entire planning board to conduct a by-site visit?
Yes.
Okay, anything else in the draft procedural resolution?
Um, typical, we'll send it to the C A B W A C, we'll send it to the uh AIPAC and down to Duchess County. Uh, the applicant's already talking with DOT and SHIPO. Those would be other referrals that would naturally come out of this. Um, so I think we've checked all the boxes for referrals.
And this might be one where when we set the date for the site visit, we make sure to extend an invitation to Dave Pearson from the health department.
Yep.
And it is important to note that we do have contact with him. Uh, Streamgo has actually been talking to them about their design. I've already initiated. Uh, first contact.
Good. O- oftentimes Dave makes a site visit with us, so we'll just, we'll just loop him in on that. Um, okay, um, if we're all good on that, could I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
Don't move, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, second, I think that was the least, is that right?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed abstentions, uh, the draft procedural resolution passes. Thank you, everyone, for your attention. For bearing with us. I know it was a long application, but it's been a few years since we've talked about it. So took a bit to catch up. So thank you very much. Good evening to those of you who are leaving us. And I think we'll move now to the public hearing portion. We have only one public hearing. This evening, and that is the Thompson Mazzarella Park, Traver Lane Site Plan Amendment Soccer Fields From Grass To Turf. Um, and I think Jim is going to be taking the lead in this application on behalf of the town and on behalf of us and. Pretty much taking charge. So go ahead, Jim.
Yep, so I get to play uh two roles in this one, both presenting the application and then uh. Telling you my comments on it and then asking for you to consider an approval resolution. So um, you did see this last month. Um, this is a proposal. For Thompson Mazzarella Park uh by the town to change out the the playing surface in the field from what was previously approved as grass. To what will now be an artificial turf field. Uh, the only part of this application that is being looked at. Uh, by the site plan amendment is to change that field to turf. Uh, so what you see here is the proposed fields uh and the baseball fields as well. Just for the purposes of showing them. Um, but again, a- as well as the parking. But all we're talking about again is is the turf field surface. Um, I took a look at it. I don't have any. Concerns with it being a turf field. Nothing else is changing other than that surface. Um, I did. I have heard some discussions about, you know, kind of what will happen with the turf field at the end of its life. Uh, that is something I think is being discussed by the town board. Um, so that, you know, there is that out there. Uh, other than that, um. That that's kind of what is being proposed. Again, I took a look at it from my planner side, uh, representing the planning board. Um, don't really see any issues with it and. That Mel is. The presentation and my comments, I left them one.
Did we um, did we assign people to do a site visit?
Uh, yes, Joe and I did the site visit. He he's not here tonight, but I'm happy to comment on it.
I would like to hear that, Sean. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I mean, overall, we took a look at the site right now. It's basically a cornfield. Um, it's a great use of property. I'm pretty excited about the possibility of having better fields in Rhinebeck, especially having kids in the area. Um, I I know that lighting isn't a part of this, but I, when I do look at this, I I'm aware, John, I see Jim, I see your uh. Your head, but uh overall, I think it's a great use of the property. Um. I I share the overall um. Challenges of turf, but when we look at our seasons and the dryness, everything that happens specifically to our area, I think turf is a incredible option for using this field. Over and over and over again. Um, as a multi-site for many sports and I'm pretty excited to see someone like us come to Rhinebeck.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Um, questions, comments from other planning board members?
This is, the location of this is right next to the existing baseball fields, is that right?
Yes. Yes, so it it's it's hard to tell on this map, because it's almost if you flip it, if you do like a one eighty of it, it's actually how it presents if you're to drive back. Um, towards the baseball, the current baseball field and the uh tennis courts.
Yeah.
Um, it's almost, it's almost, it's not a flip, but um, the on the top left is the structure that was built years ago. Um, which has restrooms and everything else. It's right now, it's literally a flat. Cornfield.
So it's basically behind the tennis court area. The tennis courts are closer to the pool. This is a a further away.
Uh, if you, the tennis court, tennis courts on your right, this is on your left.
Got it.
Let me also um remind folks who are um newer, newer to the planning board. Jim, if you go back to that first. Uh, plan that you had up, um, you you will note some um. Some gee, did I lose them? Um, there was something that I thought I saw earlier. Uh, oh, yeah, you see it to the right where it says Rhinebeck two prehistoric site boundaries. Just wanna remind people that when uh originally archaeological work was done on the site. This was found to be a very important uh prehistoric uh resource in the town. And so the way these site amenities and these park developments have been laid out. Were laid out originally very carefully in order to respect that resource. So when you see that on these maps, that's what that's referring to. If you weren't familiar kind of with the history of this, so um, just to point that out to you, because it's kind of unusual to see on a site plan. But really important to note that that has all been taken into consideration in terms of looking at the build out.
Um, Mel, it's just Craig, uh, is there any kind of a monitoring component for the construction going on? If they unearth something that's of importance?
Um, I don't believe that we have built that into it, but it's a good, it's a good point to raise, Craig. Um. Um, Jim, is that something we could um recommend without making it?
I can certainly carry it forward. I don't know if you wanna put that in the resolution. Um, I can certainly carry that forward to the town board and let them know. I believe. When this goes forward, I think our town engineer is gonna be the one kind of reviewing this as it goes in, or they may have a construction. Um, you know, manager, I'm not totally sure, but um I know our our town engineer will be engaged. So whatever you'd like me to do, I can certainly carry that forward as a as a thought.
Well, if we don't put it, if we don't put it actually in the resolution, can we add it to the resolution as a recommendation?
Yeah, oh yeah, the resolution's draft. You can, we can change the resolution, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it would actually be driven by whatever kind of a review was produced by the archaeologist in the first place, if that was. If that was, you know, if they did shovel test pits and that sort of thing and and found something that would have been in their recommendations. To have an archaeologist on site or. You know, have have. Monitor.
We, we, it's a good point, Craig, and thanks for bringing it up. We can go back and look at that. I do think, I do think and Michael may remember as well that there was a great lengthy discussions about trying to avoid anything that had been identified as of significance. Of course, as we all know, those of us in the field, you can miss something. So so I would, I would certainly feel safer putting something in there, just alerting the town to the significance of of this property. And that all care should be taken and monitoring should take place with any below grade excavations.
Right, and I just. I was familiar with this, just kind of casually familiar with this proposal about 10 years ago when it was in front of the. I I think it was the park committee and. It it just seemed like. All of the civil engineering that was required for a turf field was, you're going to be a little bit too top heavy for. For this particular site, but it seems as though all of that was approved. With the grass field, but now it's. It's going to be a turf field and it's going to have all of the concrete curbing and and a site drainage and and all of that. Is is that, is that the case? Is all of that subsurface work is is gonna, i- is is part of what the planning committee already accepted?
Jim, I'll leave that to you to answer.
That that is my understanding, Craig, that the subsurface work was already generally approved and this is going to follow that same, that same plan. Again, the only, the only thing changing from from my understanding, from talking with Clark and and being in a couple of conversations on this is the field surface.
Okay, it just, it seems like it's a lot of civil engineering work for a grass field. And is more appropriate for a turf field, so I guess it's good that it's all being done and. That that was already reviewed.
Yes, so this shows what the proposals are for, you know, the, I guess, the underground work for water collection, things like that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Craig, anything else? Anyone else? Well, that would. Bring us, I I think, to the point of. A motion to close the public hearing. Oh, and let me, let me generally, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. Or is there anyone from the public who is here, Jim, either in the chat room or before us waving a hand that would like to comment on the project?
It's just plenty board members, myself and Gretchen, Melody.
Oh, my goodness, they all went away, huh? Well, okay, then I guess we can accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Move back second, second, Sean, all those in favor?
I. I.
Opposed, any abstentions? All right, the that's the motion to close the public hearing. Could I have the, all right, so you have the. All right, so we have the approval resolution in front of us. Jim, anything you want to point out?
No, I I think you all say for for, you know, site plan amendment, I'm line three, so I'll make that that modification. I will also add in a line that's something effective. Time to take care and understand the prehistoric artifacts on site and maybe something like have a specialist available to assess the situation if needed. Would that be acceptable, something to that effect?
You like that, Craig?
Yeah, yeah, that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Add that to the resolution.
All right, is there a motion to accept the approval resolution as amended?
So move, Delise, thank you, Delise, second.
Second, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. I will call the board, Delise.
Hi.
Craig.
I.
Sean.
I.
Michael.
I.
And I vote I. The motion carries. I think that concludes the business for this evening. Jim, is there anything else? We have no referrals. I think we're.
That's it.
I think we're good. I know we're being a little. Overwhelmed with emails from Jim about setting up site visits, so we're doing our best to consolidate as many of them as we can and make it easy on everybody. But, you know, we, it's no avoiding that we've got some big projects coming at us. So I thank you all for your patience and your perseverance and we'll just keep moving on ahead. So with that, does someone wish to make a motion to adjourn?
So.
Everybody, just pick someone, Gretchen, I'll pick them. So we'll say Michael moved to adjourn and Delise moved to second, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Good night.